I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 7th, 2020, meeting of the Committee of the Whole at the King County Council. I'm Joe McDermott, Chair of the Committee of the Whole, want to welcome everyone. And as we start today, I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the traditional lands of the Puget Salish peoples, past and present. We thank these caretakers of the land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. I'd also like to acknowledge the many urban Indians in King County who have brought their cultural ways of life here and greatly enriched our community. Today, we'll be hearing updates from the county, federal, and state responses to the current pandemic, as well as an update on work undertaken by the council to assess outstanding needs in the region. Ms. Calderon, if you'd please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Bell Ducey?
Here.
Councilmember Dombowski?
Here.
Councilmember Dunn?
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Here.
Councilmember Lambert?
Yes.
Councilmember Abdegral?
Here.
Councilmember Von Reibauer?
Here.
Councilmember Zahalai?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
All members present, you have a call.
Thank you. And Councilmember Von Reibauer, I'll beat you to the request, we will do our best to acknowledge people throughout, members throughout the meeting today so that they know that they're being heard and not muted by either their own phone or the system.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that, I would welcome a motion to approve the minutes of our March 31st, 2020 meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
Still moved?
It's been moved that we approve the minutes of our previous meeting. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The minutes are unanimously approved. We'll now move into public comment. Ms. Dedman, do we have anyone on the line wishing to provide public comment?
Mr. Chair, we have one caller on the line.
All right. Having an entirely remote meeting is relatively new for the King County Council, and I want to be sure that everyone who has called in understands the rules and procedures for public comment. First, our standard rules, and if you're hearing them for the first time, I'll apologize because they can sound overly harsh, but unfortunately, we've needed, we found it necessary to have them in place over time. Public comment must be related to items on today's meeting agenda and not be used for the purpose of assisting a campaign for election of any person to any office, or for the promotion or opposition of any ballot measure. It must also not include any obscene speech, and if the speaker fails to abide by these restrictions, I'll rule the speaker out of order and require the speaker to exit the virtual meeting. As members of the public joined the meeting, they were automatically muted, and I can't see names, only telephone numbers. When we proceed through public comment, we'll identify callers, or the caller or callers, by the last four digits of their phone number. Ms. Dedman, we'll call on you and unmute your line. At that time, will you please also make sure that your phone is unmuted, if you have already muted it yourself? And then, before you begin your formal testimony, please speak and wait to be acknowledged so we both, so everyone knows you can be heard on the line. And then, when you start, if you'd be kind enough to spell your name, so we can get it accurate in the records. We'll ask you to limit your testimony to two minutes, and a timer will go off then. You can certainly finish your thought, but please wrap up your comments after the two-minute timer. And if you're listening to the TV or streaming the meeting, please turn that function off when you're speaking, otherwise, we'll hear feedback on the line. With that, I'll ask Ms. Dedman to proceed with public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I should also note that after you've provided your comment, it will be easier for us to manage the call if you might get off the Skype feature and follow the rest of the meeting either on Channel 22, KCTV, or stream it online. You can find the stream on the council's website, kingcounty.gov/council, and click on the "Watch Us Live" button. We'll now move to public comment, and so I will ask Ms. Dedman to call on people for testimony. Ms. Dedman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now call on the caller on the line by the last four digits of your phone number. Please start by saying and spelling your name, so that we can put it on the record. Caller with the number ending in 3999, please proceed.
This is Doug Levy, and I'm listening only, no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Mr. Chair, that is all the callers on the line.
And I would, if that represents all the callers, then we know there's no one else waiting to participate. Mr. Levy, I would suggest that you can watch online or stream, however, we certainly won't remove you from the line. And thank you for your participation. Item five today is a briefing. We'll now turn to a series of briefings on our agenda. Dwight Dively, the Director of the Office of Performance Strategy and Budget, is going to give us an update on the executive COVID response and recovery measures on the horizon. Before I turn it over to Mr. Dively, I'll note that at last week's meeting, members expressed an interest in hearing more about the preliminary budget impacts report that Mr. Dively referenced. He won't be speaking about that today, as he needs more time to review the report, but we hope to have him back at our next meeting on this very topic. And then finally, similar to last week, I'll ask members to please hold your questions until Mr. Dively pauses for questions, or until the end of his remarks. With that, Mr. Dively, the line is yours. I know Mr. Dively is participating by telephone, we'll make sure we identify his telephone number unmuted, please be patient with us.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you. Sorry for the technological confusion. Every week when I call into this meeting on Skype, it literally never connects, it just is loading and loading and loading, so we're back to the landline phone again. So, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to come before you virtually. I do have seven things to cover this morning, or this afternoon, I think it'll be shorter than last week, but we'll see. So let me start by talking about what we have spent to date, and let me just give you a quick update. As of Friday, we had actually spent a little over $17 million of money that has gone out the door. Either salaries for county employees, or payments to vendors and contractors. That obviously is a figure that is lagged by several weeks with payroll expenses and procurement costs, and so our actual spending is clearly much higher than that. But just to give you a sense of how much already has gone out the door, that was what we had put out by April 3rd. We are currently estimating that our costs so far to acquire, site, set up, lease, operate the emergency facilities that we're doing are going to be at least $50 million. So, a very significant amount of money committed in that area. And we believe that we've received guidance from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, that they will in fact cover all of those facility-related costs, which is great news. So I will pause at that point and see if you have any questions about our current spending to date.
Colleagues?
Mr. Chair, this is Claudia.
Councilmember Bell Ducey?
I'm sorry, but Dwight, could you just repeat the number, the top-line number, one more time, I just missed it.
Okay. As of Friday, April 3rd, we had spent out the door $17.4 million.
Thank you.
And then, and then the $50 million figure you referenced was again what?
Yeah, and that is just an estimate, but it is our estimate of our costs to cite, acquire, lease, build, operate the emergency response facilities. So, the isolation and quarantine facilities, the tents that we're doing in Shoreline and Bellevue, that's what we think we will have spent once each of those is up and operating.
The operation and citing and acquiring?
Yes, and they, obviously, the cost of operation will depend on how long we use each of the facilities. So that is, that part is a very, very rough estimate.
Okay. Councilmember Zahalai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, thanks so much for that update, that's amazing news to hear that we'll get reimbursed by FEMA for those $50 million funds for the facilities. Do we have any further guidance from the federal government, or the state, on what other types of expenses that we will get reimbursed?
Yeah, that's my second point, so let me know when we can move on to that, and I will answer your question.
Any other questions on what we've spent to date? Hearing none, please proceed.
Okay, so, there is no final news about what they call the Section 5001 Coronavirus Relief Fund. That is the $150 billion that will go to state and large local governments. But we do have some information, not great, but in some cases. So, we are still waiting for the Treasury to provide guidance. The expectation that they had set is we would have that guidance by the end of the week. Late last week, they said, "Well, maybe it'll be another week after that." So I don't know for sure when we are going to know. There is a debate going on within the Treasury and with congressional officials about how to calculate the amount of money that will come to counties with populations over 500,000, if that county has a city with a population of over 500,000. The clear wording of the bill would suggest that in our case, for King County, we should get an allocation based on our total population, which is roughly 2.2 million people. But there are those who are arguing that Seattle's population should be deducted from the county's population to calculate King County's share. And that would reduce our population base to something closer to 1.5 million. And so that, basically, one-third of our money is at risk if the Treasury decides on the deductive calculation. We have made it very clear through our federal lobbyists that that approach is nonsensical, since King County is the public health department for the entire county, not just the part outside the city of Seattle. But unfortunately, that has not yet been resolved. And then finally, on this, they are, I would say, at the point of being 99% clear, that this money can be used for our expenses that have been, weren't budgeted as of March 27th, but cannot be used for revenue losses. So if that interpretation persists, our amount of money should be very helpful in covering all the spending we're doing, beyond that, that FEMA will cover, but unfortunately, will not cover any revenue losses we have in our general fund or mental illness and drug dependency fund. As I mentioned last week, in a different section of the bill that provides money for transit agencies, it is explicitly noted that that money can be used to offset revenue losses. So Metro would be in a better place than the general fund and the mid-fund if this final interpretation comes through as we expect. So let me pause there and see if there are questions about that.
Colleagues?
Lambert?
Dombowski? Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, when we are doing those calculations, and I know that, pardon me, calls I was on this morning with federal people, they were talking about COVID-4, and choosing some delineations that would be not only for the 500,000 and below, but getting money more into the cities more quickly. What do you think about having the local government of this county be able to calculate as over the 500,000, if in fact, Seattle gets to do that?
The local government unfortunately wouldn't qualify because it's not over 500,000. So our unincorporated local government responsibilities would not count under that calculus. It is absolutely correct that of the money that we ultimately do get as King County, we're going to need to have a conversation about how much of it we in essence spend as the metropolitan government, and how much we spend as the local government, because there are going to be two distinct sets of needs based on each of those government approaches.
Thank you, and I think it's going to be really important for those to be separately done, so that we don't end up shorting the other people who will have two bites at the apple, and the local government only having one bite at the apple. Thank you.
Councilmember Dombowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, thank you for the update. Could you say again, if you didn't, how much of this direct grant to local governments we would be expecting on either scenario? And then, what the purpose or expected use of the funds is? And I do want to say, I received a letter from one of the cities in my jurisdiction that were paying attention to this and asking for a partnership, either in this round, or in the future, on the CDBGE grant money, to help them with their needs, which makes some sense to me.
Yeah, so Councilmember, I do not have in front of me the with and without the city of Seattle calculus, so as soon as we get off the call, I will pull up that file, and I will email you that information. In fact, I'll email all council members that information, because the National Association of Counties did do an analysis that counted it each way, and I just don't have that in front of me, so let me get that to you. It is, we're still waiting for guidance about how we can use the funds. It appears that it will be very broadly defined in terms of any, I shouldn't say any, but almost any expenditures we make to respond to COVID. So if that ultimately is the guidance, then we're going to have the ability to, you know, do quite a bit in a variety of ways with that money. And we're going to have some conversations later in my presentation about some other proposals we're making that ultimately, we might not have to spend the money I'm going to talk about, because we might be able to use federal money instead, but we'll come to that in a bit. To the point about cities, obviously, the city of Seattle is going to get a direct allocation of this fund, and the state of Washington is going to get a very significant amount of money from this fund. As you know, other cities, at least in this bill, do not. And so I think one of the conversations we will have to have is, how much of the county's money do we make available to King County cities other than Seattle? And then, how much of the state's money would also be available to those cities? And that's going to require some coordination. So, we have identified it, not for every city, but we have contacts with most of the cities of who they are kind of appointing as their lead for this effort, and particularly focused on a recovery effort. And so we'll be working with them to identify what they have spent that is COVID-related.
Thank you very much, Dwight. And just a final wrap-up question, with respect to the flexibility of use, could this funding source help us with our efforts for laid-off unemployed workers and small businesses without the restrictions that our state constitution imposes on get-to-public funds?
Yeah, I believe, you know, again, we don't have the final rules, but federal money is not bound by those restrictions, as you know. And so, yes, we think it probably could be used in that way. I'll just note that Councilmember Zahalai and I have had some conversations about this, and one challenge for us as King County government is, we don't have much of an infrastructure to administer anything like that. And so, when we're talking about those ideas, it's not just the question of, do we have money for them, how would we do it? And I think we will have to get very creative and ask people to do some jobs that are quite different than their regular jobs, in order to set up something that would help low-income individuals or small businesses.
Zahalai?
Councilmember Zahalai?
Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, sorry, sorry, was someone else asking a question?
No, you first.
Councilmember Zahalai, go ahead, we have Councilmember Lambert after you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just building off Councilmember Dombowski's question, Dwight, as you know, we have had those conversations about the public gift prohibition for my colleagues, I asked the Attorney General for further guidance, and yesterday, they just got back to us, and I'll have Veronda send that around to you all, but we got some, you know, positive news about being able to use local funds to directly help low-income people and struggling businesses. So Dwight, my question is, I recognize what you said about federal funds not being bound by the same state prohibitions as local funds, but if we are able to use local funds based on the Attorney General's new guidance, would, is your belief that that would be reimbursable by the federal government, based on the guidance that you've heard so far?
Yes, and again-
Things like direct cash assistance, and things like small business support?
Right, again, we have not gotten final guidance, but I believe that would be correct. And so, we could, if, again, if we have an appropriate way to distribute it, we could front the money from our own money, and then expect to be either reimbursed, or just have access to the federal funds for that purpose. So, yeah, thank you for passing on the Attorney General's guidance, that was, surprised me that they opined the way they did, but certainly with low-income individuals, there's, in their opinion, there was no real issue at all. And in their opinion about providing money to small business, they were pretty confident, but not absolutely certain, that we could use local funds for that purpose. So, if ultimately, we could reimburse with federal funds, I would think there really wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, Dwight.
Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just looking at my notes from a couple of meetings, and one of the things that I didn't realize that we had access to was SCORE Centers, and apparently, there are two SCORE Centers in our county, one in Seattle and one in Redmond supposedly, and they are executives that are through the SBA that can help our businesses with some questions on, "How do I do different things than I need to do?" So, that I can get to people. And then, with the payroll protection, there's a lot of good information that has just come out on that. I was on a call early this morning with Susan Valbene's office, and she has a person in her office that is quite well-versed on that, and it does sound like they're going to be very, very open on what will be reimbursed by businesses. And there is a formula on the PPE, and that it goes back to February 17th of when you had to lay off people, in order to rehire them under this money. So, I think there's some good things that they're working on, and also, Department of Commerce was talking about the idea that there are going to be some changes, and so I think everybody's seeing how important this is. So, I will get that information to you.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
Hearing none, please proceed.
Okay, third one is super quick, just wanted to thank the council for passing the emergency childcare legislation last week, with funding from the PASTA account. That was most helpful, and we are looking to find ways to leverage that, to get more benefit from it. So we move on to my fourth point, and there's actually, within the fourth point, there are four sub-points, so I'll label them 4A, B, C, and D. So the fourth one is work that we are doing, or thinking about doing, related to housing. So 4A, the first point is, I believe the council members joined the executive and signed a letter to the governor seeking an evictions moratorium about a month ago. He did do that. The deadline for that, or the expiration date for that is coming up, and the executive's office has asked the governor's office to extend that for at least another month. 4B, I think you all are aware that the executive, using his authority as the de facto treasurer of the county, extended the due date for property tax payments from the normal April 30th until June 1st, without penalty. So normally, if you pay late in the month of May, there would be a 1% interest charge, and that charge has been waived, as long as you make a payment, make your payment by June 1st. We reached out, or I shouldn't say we, the Finance and Business Operations Division, who's done a great job with this, reached out to the, many of the big mortgage companies, and made it clear to them that since they already have the money, we expected them to make their payments on time, and got reassurance that they would in fact do that. And so that represents about half of all the money that comes in. We are also in the process of contacting large commercial property owners, and encouraging them to pay on time, and we've gotten some very favorable response to that. I will just note that it is almost inconceivable that we can extend the date any further, because many of our special districts that really have property taxes, their only revenue source, have debt service payments that occur in early June. So if we were to further postpone the due date on property taxes, we could put some of those districts in a very difficult position. And so our Finance and Business Operations Division has actually reached out to some of the hospital districts, and the school districts, and explained the finances of this, showed them that they are not going to be at risk of not being able to pay their debt service, and that has been very welcomingly received by those special districts. So let me pause at this point and see if there's questions about the property tax extension.
Caldwell?
Councilmember Caldwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, I've received a few emails pertaining to whether or not partial payments on the property tax payment could be made, rather than entire ones. And would that be, I would expect that would involve a proportional penalty, is that correct?
It is, it is really difficult to do partial payments and time payment plans, the, and the reason for that is, we have an ancient property tax administration system, I think as you all know, that we are in the process of replacing. So, if you receive a letter like that, my suggestion is that you forward it to the Treasury Division of FBOD, and they can provide the taxpayer with information on what options are available. And there's a difference between the real property tax, property tax on real property, and the personal property tax, which is typically a, only for businesses that have equipment that is also subject to property tax. Their ability to provide these kind of partial payments is different, depending on whether it's real or personal. So rather than trying to work all that out over the phone, I would just encourage you to forward anything you get along those lines to the Treasury Division, and they can follow up with the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Claudia.
Councilmember Bell Ducey?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Dwight, to you and to Ken and others for reaching out to the hospital districts. I had gotten some of their real concerns with meeting their financial obligations, they're very dependent, some of these districts, on property tax, and obviously, this is not the time we want to be putting the hospitals into undue financial distress, so your time and energy with them was very much appreciated, thank you.
You're welcome. And I do have to say that Ken Guy and Carol Basel, who is the Treasury Section Manager, have done-
and others for reaching out to the hospital districts. I had gotten some of their, uh, real concerns with meeting their, uh, their financial obligations. They're very dependent, some of these districts, on property tax. And obviously, this is not the time we want to be putting the hospitals into, uh, undue financial distress. So your time and energy with them was very much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and I, I do have to say that Ken Guy and Carol Basel, who is the, the Treasury Section Manager, have done a phenomenal job with communications and reaching out to our special districts. And so, if you have the opportunity to thank them, I would encourage you to do that.
Will do. Thank you.
Colleagues?
I have a question, another question, but this one is on the housing part, the request to the governor to extend the moratorium.
Councilmember Cole Wells, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, my question has to do with 4A on housing, and that is, uh, with regard to the request for the governor to extend the moratorium, I think you said, for another month, uh, on evictions. I had been reading before that this would possibly in, require a special session being called of the legislature. I'm not sure of the specifics on that, but from what you said here, I'm assuming that that would not be required, or do you know?
Um, Councilmember, I had not heard that a special session would be required. I don't know for sure that I'm right about that. So let's, uh, make a note, and we'll follow up with you to find out whether there is any truth to that.
Thank you. And it was just conjecture, but it was in the media. There were, I saw it in several places, and I can't tell you right now where those were.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
Anyone else?
Dombowski.
Councilmember Dombowski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, on the property tax topic, but, uh, not covered so far. And Dwight, I know this is a little out of your daily wick, but, uh, before the shutdowns hit, uh, King County was messaging out, and many of our offices at the council did the same to our constituents, that, uh, change in state law that increased the income limits to the mid $50,000 range for seniors and, uh, others for some property tax relief. Um, we, uh, understand that the requests for information and processing applications, uh, may have, well, it's my sense that it perhaps overloaded a little bit of the assessor's processing operation there. Um, but I'm wondering if there, what the status of, of that operation is, and if there can be any flexibility on the deadlines for application for folks that want to apply for that relief.
Um, Councilmember, I am not aware of the status of that with the assessor's office. Let me follow up with them. Um, I believe that the executive would have authority, uh, and if he doesn't, the governor would, to move that deadline. So if there is some problem in getting them processed on time, uh, I think we have some tools available to correct that. So let me track down the status of that.
That would really be appreciated. I, we got a lot of feedback that folks were having trouble, uh, getting through. Uh, I think it's just the surge. It's, this is not a criticism at all. And then I think compounding that with the work-from-home, uh, change in, in our protocols and the ability, frankly, for folks to pull their information together and submit it, I think if we can do something through, uh, our government to provide some flexibility, I think it'd be appreciated and helpful.
Great. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I had not been aware of that potential problem.
Hearing no other questions. Dwight, please proceed.
Okay. So let's go to 4C. Um, 4C is rental assistance. Uh, so I think council members are aware that, uh, the Seattle Foundation has put money into the United Way's Home Base Program, which provides rental assistance. Um, we are, uh, planning on having the county partner with that and invest about one and a half million dollars of money from our Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levy that was already appropriated for rental assistance, uh, to go in with that so we can leverage, um, additional nonprofit and private money for that purpose. Uh, there won't need to be any further council action to accomplish that because it's already appropriated, but, um, I thought I would let you know that we are intending to do that.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. Dwight, on that, um, will that assistance be county-wide?
Yes, because the, uh, levy is a county-wide levy.
So, um, as we're collecting the information on that, if we could get it broken down by district, that would be very helpful.
Uh, I don't know if that's possible, but we can certainly see if it is.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Hearing nothing else on that. Let me move on to 4-
I apologize, Up the Grove.
Um, Councilmember Up the Grove, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, is, uh, have you given any consideration to increasing that amount, um, through other sources? I know our sources are limited, but whether or not we tap further into emergency reserves, or whether we have a coordinated effort with the state, if they're going to have a special legislative session. It seems like the greatest need on the horizon that I'm sensing, and would love to explore strategies to be bigger and bolder.
All right. Why don't, uh, Councilmember, why don't I, um, ask DCHS to assess whether they have any other existing funds maybe would require a new appropriation, uh, or if they, we can identify other funds, if, assuming there is need, which I think you're right, there's going to desperately be need. So let me have DCHS follow up on that.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, follow-up from Balducci.
Please, go ahead, Balducci.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to second, uh, what Councilmember Up the Grove just asked for, and I want to, uh, encourage us all to work on, as we get into the later discussion about lodging tax, on trying to, uh, request that the legislature give us some more freedom to use some of the future housing lodging tax money for these kinds of purposes. Uh, I, I, I believe they might do it, uh, and they've definitely heard from a number of people that we would like to have them do that, uh, so that we could potentially increase that amount. I'd also love to have a sense of what we think like the real need out in the world is, again, to a later topic. But thank you for letting me weigh in now.
Cole Wells.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to third that. And also, I have a question. When we speak of rental assistance, uh, would any of that be required to be repaid, or is it strictly a, like, grant?
Councilmember, our practice has been that it is a grant as opposed to a loan.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, please go ahead, Dwight.
All right. So the last thing under housing, um, or that's related to housing, is some ideas we're thinking about for homeless youth. Um, so you may recall that, um, in the state statute that governs the lodging tax, the, the housing bucket, uh, which is restricted, as Councilmember Balducci was alluding to, to particular types of transit-oriented development, does have the opportunity to use funding from that same bucket for homeless youth services. And the council, when you allocated the money a couple of years ago, did include an allocation for homeless youth. Um, we have heard, and I believe some council members have heard, from organizations that are working with homeless youth, that the COVID situation has made, uh, the need for that even greater. And particularly now that the schools are not going to reopen for the rest of this school year, uh, those homeless youth don't even have school to go to. So, uh, we are contemplating proposing advancing a million dollars of the future funding for homeless youth services, um, into 2020 as part of the lodging tax legislation. Uh, and then having that money available now rather than having to wait more than a year to have access to it. And we're also looking at, um, opportunities similar to the last one, where we might be able to leverage other money, other state money, or federal money, or local money, to also add to that homeless youth, uh, uh, amount of money that we would put up. And again, last point I'll make on this is that it is possible that ultimately we will be able to use federal money for this purpose, but until we know that, we are going to propose this lodging tax advance idea. Um, and then maybe ultimately, we don't have to actually implement it that way, but in order to get some money available sooner, that was, uh, part of what we want to propose.
Thank you. Colleagues?
This is Balducci again. I strongly endorse.
Councilmember Balducci.
I strongly endorse.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dwight, is there, uh, a reason, reason for the limitation of up to $1 million available?
It could be more, but in your, out-year allocations that the council made, um, there isn't a whole lot that is in that particular category. Um, and so, we could move more forward, but then there would be significantly less available in subsequent years. And so, that's why we're a little hesitant to, um, actually do that. Um, I, I believe you have, um, received a summary from council staff that kind of itemizes how much is for various purposes. And there, uh, over the 23-year period, there's only about $34 million set aside for homeless youth. So that's, you know, a little over a million dollars, a million and a half dollars a year. So we were kind of hesitant about advancing more because then there would be less in the future, and we know this is not a need that is going to go away. But certainly, conceptually, Councilmember, if the council would want to do more, you could.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Mr. Dively, please proceed.
Okay. So the fifth one on my list is small business, um, assistance. And this may have changed now with what, uh, the Attorney General sent yesterday. But as of, before I read the Attorney General's opinion, um, we're following up on the idea that Councilmember Up the Grove raised last week about working through some of the smaller local chambers of commerce, uh, because they are going to probably be very valuable institutions. We are still waiting for guidance about community development block grant money. Um, the, the county is going to receive additional community block grant money, uh, from this latest federal bill. And we, we believe the first group of funds, and there might be a second group, would be about 3.3 million of CDBG itself and a little less than a million of emergency shelter grant money. Um, in normal cases, that CDBG would be available for small business assistance, but we don't know if that's the set of rules that we'll get from HUD for this new money. So we still are not, we don't have a definitive decision from the federal government about whether we can use that or not. Having said all of that, now that the Attorney General has given us this new opinion, we can look potentially at using other money and potentially the federal money that we're talking about in the earlier conversation, also for small business assistance. So let me pause there.
Colleagues?
Cole Wells.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but I noticed that, uh, right after we began our meeting, uh, we heard from our Communications Department that the governor announced that the state would be making available $5 million for small business grants with some, uh, restrictions there. I don't know if others had seen that.
Thank you. Hearing no questions. Mr. Dively?
Okay. So item six is to just revisit the same topic we talked about last week, which is, uh, and we have not yet transmitted this. We were waiting to, uh, consider this homeless youth idea. So the executive is still planning on transmitting a lodging tax, uh, ordinance that would do what we talked about last week. Um, it would provide $8 million for tourism promotion that would then, uh, help us rebuild our lodging tax revenue, which is going to take a very large hit here in the next year or two. Um, and then $4 million total to For Culture, um, half of it for their arts, uh, relief efforts, and half of it for small music venues. Um, and then we're going to add the million dollars that we were discussing earlier for homeless youth. And again, just to remind people, the idea is that this would, uh, give the flexibility to, to move the money forward in time through an interfund loan, spend the money in 2020, and then repay it from future allocations of lodging tax revenue in the appropriate categories. Um, again, as I mentioned earlier, it may prove ultimately that we don't have to actually take that future lodging tax money, and instead, we can just use some of the federal money. Uh, but having that appropriation, regardless of the ultimate funding source, would give us the ability to implement these things quite quickly. Um, we talked about this a lot last time, uh, but I'm happy to answer any other questions if people have them.
Up the Grove? Anyone else other than Up the Grove right now?
Lambert, Dombowski.
Up the Grove and Dombowski. I'll keep a list.
Lambert.
I'm Councilmember Up the Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, uh, I might, maybe missed it last week. I didn't remember the discussion of, uh, should be $2 million for small music venues. Could you explain a little bit more about that, why that was prioritized?
Um, the reason that was-
And also, would they not be eligible for the small business assistance like everyone else? Or are these nonprofit, small, nonprofit music venues?
So it, there, there are two categories, as you know. There are nonprofits and there are for-profit businesses. Um, a lot of the arts relief efforts that have happened so far using philanthropy, basically, have focused on the larger cultural institutions. And for the executive, these, uh, there's kind of a, a category that has fallen through the cracks, which are these smaller performance venues, uh, again, both for-profit and nonprofit venues. And so, he felt that was a priority, and reaching out and talking with For Culture, uh, they agreed that that was a category that they thought they could help if they had some funding. So that was the rationale for the separate bucket.
Would the for-profit one, I mean, I think of a, a for-profit music venue basically being a bar. I mean, is that what we're talking about?
Um, no, there are, you can think of the Showbox as an example that is a, a for-profit business, um, that isn't, I mean, yes, they have alcohol, but it isn't a bar per se. I, I don't think we're talking about, um, you know, the traditional bar that maybe someone comes in and sings on Friday and Saturday nights. We're actually talking about venues that are focused on providing entertainment and music.
Gotcha. Well, I'd, I'd be interested in a little more info about maybe even focusing it to the nonprofit organization versus, you know, we're, it, I don't know, it just seems a little odd to me, but-
We can get you more information about that.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember, Member Dombowski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of along the lines of Councilmember Up the Grove, um, on the $4 million for the cultural sector, um, I too would be probably supportive of a little broader category there, um, and certainly, I think, focusing it on the nonprofit venues. Um, and then, you know, we, Councilmember Cole Wells and I, and I think others, have had a number of discussions with a, a broader section of the cultural sector, including our larger institutions, which are, which are also struggling. And, um, I'm wondering, um, whether or not these funds could also be available for them.
So the, the proposal we're, uh, contemplating at the moment has two different, uh, allocations of $2 million. One that's more in the, uh, arts and cultural organizations that you're describing, and then one that's more in, uh, music and entertainment venues that, um, I was talking about with Councilmember Up the Grove. So, uh, that kind of refinement along the lines of what you're discussing is exactly the kind of things that we would expect that the council would be looking at.
Thank you, Dwight. And just with respect to the actual decision-making on the grants, would all of the $4 million be administered through For Culture and their, uh, basically established grant-making protocols and procedures?
Um, that, that is our proposal, yes.
Very good. Okay. Thank you so much.
Cole Wells.
Lambert.
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions, Dwight. Um, when do we need to know on- Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions, Dwight. Um, when do we need to know on this lodging tax decision?
Um, well, that, that is up to the council, obviously. So our plan is to send this over this week. Obviously, the sooner it is passed, the sooner the money can get out the door and make a difference. But the council is, since this is a new appropriation, this is entirely within your judgment.
So since nobody can actually go to these events right now, it seems to me that it would be more prudent to wait until we find out when people can start going out again. And if that's longer than we thought, that maybe that money needs to be given to more housing, um, set-asides or, um, some other issues that might come up. Uh, one of the issues that I'm concerned about coming up is both mental health and domestic violence expenditures. Um, I've been checking with different sources, and they're telling me they're not seeing a huge increase in where they normally see domestic violence, but it's showing up much more heavily in the churches in ways that they had not seen it to that degree. So wherever it's showing up, I think that we need to be cognizant about, um, looking at mental health and, um, domestic abuse, um, as we go forward. And then my second question is, um, in a conversation with OMB, they said that there was going to be a $2 billion CDBG, um, dispersing, and $1 billion of it was going to go to the state based on the COVID data. Since we've had really high COVID data, how much of that $1 billion do you think that the state has gotten, and how much of that do you think we will get?
So the, councilmember, the earlier comment I had about CDBG is our share of the million, or I'm sorry, the billion dollars that, uh, is going to local government. I don't know what share the state of Washington expects to get, um, out of the state $1 billion. That's something we can follow up on. Um, to your first question, um, I believe you are right that either during or after COVID, we are going to see some significant additional demands for behavioral health services. Uh, this is an incredibly stressful time for almost all of us. Um, the lodging tax money, as you know, could not be used for that purpose. Uh, but other money, uh, could be, potentially some of this other federal money that we've talked about could be. And so that's a good thing to bookmark as a potential need in response to COVID.
Is there anything that we could start putting out now on how to reduce stress? What are the warning signs? You know, how do you, how do you talk to your family members if you think that there's domestic violence going on? You know, any kinds of help tools that we could be putting out now?
Um, I am far from an expert on behavioral health, so I, I'm sure you are right that there are things we could be communicating. I don't know what those are. Um, I also would just remind everyone that our behavioral health people are extraordinarily busy right now and doing things that are not in their job descriptions, uh, like being the manager of some of these emergency facilities that we've cited. So their capacity right now to do things is pretty limited. So I would encourage councilmembers, if you have contacts with nonprofit organizations or academic organizations that have this kind of expertise, that, uh, trying to encourage them to, uh, through all of the networks and means they have to communicate, uh, would be very, very helpful right now.
Thank you. I, I would like to do that. I just didn't want to get ahead of public health and then say, well, that wasn't an approved message. But I think anything that would come from one of our universities or something should be considered approved. Thank you.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dwight, with the funding that would go for the arts to For Culture to distribute, uh, some, not all arts organizations and institutions, but under, uh, the jurisdiction of For Culture. So would there be, uh, in, within the ordinance, a change in that, or how would that be handled?
So we believe that, um, the emergency declarations create more flexibility than is typically the case. Um, so in the conversations that have been had with For Culture, there is an expectation that they will, uh, be as broad as they can with this funding. Um, we have to be still careful about state law. Uh, and earlier we had a conversation about the value of getting the legislature to make the state law more flexible. This is yet another example of that. Um, so we are hoping that the, uh, potential beneficiaries of the money that goes through For Culture are broader than they normally would be.
So for, if I may go on, Mr. Chair, uh, so it's, um, one other part of that would be funding of science organizations. And, uh, like currently, For Culture is not able to do that. Would that be something that would be viewed as providing more flexibility to accomplish that?
Yes, that's what we're hoping to do, uh, is to use this guidance that we can be more flexible in this circumstance, uh, somewhat similar to what the Attorney General has said about the traditional interpretations of lending of credit, uh, in order to provide more flexible, um, access to funds. And I think if the council, you know, councilmember, if you're interested, you may want to, uh, work through us and get a briefing from the prosecutor's office about this issue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Dwight, please.
Okay, so my very last item, and this will be very brief. Um, I mentioned last week that we were right in the process of renewing the county's liability insurance. And our folks in risk management, Jennifer Hills and Allison Frey, did a phenomenal job getting what we got. So just to, uh, give you a point of comparison, for the year that ended March 30th of 2020, so last week, the county had 112.5 million dollars of liability insurance, and we paid a $3.6 million premium to get that. The most we were able to get this year was 67 and a half million of liability insurance and paid 3.8 million. Uh, the market simply did not exist to insure us to the extent that we had been insured, um, in the prior year. Uh, they did a phenomenal job of getting all of our other, uh, insurance policies that renewed at this time renewed. Uh, so the marine liability that covers the, uh, water taxis, the fiduciary coverage, the, uh, cybersecurity insurance, and we were able to maintain, and in one case even expand our coverage, and got premium increases of 5% to 7%, which is remarkably low. So those were all fine. Um, it's our, the excess liability insurance that was problematic. I would also note that our property insurance renews on a schedule that comes up in July, and we are expecting to have significant challenges, uh, getting that property insurance renewed as well. So again, uh, outstanding work by risk management to get what we got, but we are now in a period where we have significantly less insurance moving forward than we had in the past.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Zollai.
Uh, councilmember Dunn.
Oh, councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dwight, thanks for the update on the insurance. Obviously, that for me is very troubling, having been in the lawyer business in a past life. I can see that the actions taken in a variety of fronts have the potential to trigger significant lawsuits, unlike maybe anything we've seen in a long time. And absent some, uh, move by state government to curtail immunity and, and liability in various ways, I'm worried about those lawsuits. Um, what is, if we were to get into a situation where we exhausted that liability insurance, where do the funds come from is the next step?
So, councilmember Dunn, as you know, we maintain a large, um, risk management fund that is set up with the basis that we anticipate all claims that we are aware of and reserve a certain amount, uh, for those claims that's based on an actuarial assessment. And so we have, I, something on the order, I don't have it in front of me, of about $75 million available in that fund. And so one of the things that, uh, King County does that, in my opinion, is very impressive, and it predates me, so I get no credit for this, is we pre-fund our expected liabilities. Uh, and so if we were to have a claim that exceeded our insurance coverage, the first place we would go would be to that fund and draw down some of the balance in that fund to, to pay for it. Um, obviously, we would have to replenish that over two or three or four years. Uh, so that would be what would happen next. If perchance all of that went away, uh, then we're looking at, you know, whatever fund that was the liability incurred in and having to either pay it or finance it out of that fund. Uh, and then that would lead to some very challenging, uh, budget consequences.
Dwight, thanks for that. I appreciate that. It might be something we want to consider as a legislative strategy, to the extent to which state, at state level, local governments can be held liable for actions taken during this crisis, but that's for another conversation. Thanks, Dwight, for that.
You're welcome. That was the end of my prepared remarks, so I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Colleagues?
Dembowski.
Councilmember Dembowski, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you mentioned, Dwight, a couple of times about, uh, our work and need to work with the legislature on some items. And I was on another call this morning with electeds. I understand that Representative Larry Springer is, uh, helping on, uh, the House Democratic Caucus lead some, uh, work there. And I wondered, uh, how helpful it would be if we could get the legislature to give King County some relief from the no supplantation language that applies to so many of our special levies, uh, in order to be more flexible to meet current needs.
Um, councilmember, that would be phenomenally helpful. Um, and let me mention two specific places where that would be good. First, in the mental illness drug dependency statute, the MID statute, there are supplantation provisions that apply everywhere in the state that, uh, do limit our flexibility significantly. And then secondly, um, in the property tax levy lid lift statute, King County and only King County has a provision around, uh, non-supplantation that, um, I mean, I just have to say, this is my own personal opinion, is ridiculous that applies to one government within the state and not to any of the others. Uh, removing that restriction would also be very helpful. Uh, but I believe, and I'm not practicing law without a license, I believe it would only be, uh, helpful prospectively because our voters voted for existing levy lid lifts, uh, with that provision in the law, and I doubt that we could retroactively apply that. But it would be nice to be able to fix that prospectively. So yes, those, that is definitely an area where action in a special session would be most welcome.
Thank you very much.
Other colleagues? Dwight, I want to thank you very much for joining us and spending, um, better than an hour with us this afternoon and briefing us on the extensive, um, response and work from the executive branch.
You're very welcome. I look forward to doing it again.
Thank you. We look forward to that as well.
Thanks, Dwight.
That takes us to our next item. We'll hear from Mac Nicholson, the council's Director of Government Relations. Last week, Mr. Nicholson described how the state and federal governments were responding to COVID-19. Today, he'll provide some follow-up information based on member questions. Mr. Nicholson, the line is yours.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nicholson, we have, you're live now.
Thank you. I have, uh, a mute button on my headset, and I can never remember which is on and which is off, but it sounds like I've got it sorted out at this point. Uh, Mac Nicholson, Director of Government Relations, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, um, providing some follow-up information. I should note at the outset that I've been taking notes on special session, uh, ideas and thoughts, uh, throughout this whole discussion. Um, and can jump to that part first. Uh, was asked last week about the rumors on special session. Uh, we're hearing a lot of discussion, um, but most of it has special session, um, occurring likely after the June 17 revenue forecast. Um, so that gives us, uh, about two months, uh, likely before a special session gets called, um, so we can continue to, uh, monitor those rumors and then come up with items, uh, that, that we can work on and ask, we can make a legislature during a special session. A couple, uh, other quick updates. Uh, as far as implementation of the CARES Act, um, we're starting to get some information and clarity about how some of that funding will move. Uh, in some cases, uh, the formulas are coming out, um, and the money is starting to, to, uh, be allocated. Uh, in other cases, uh, we're just seeing more challenges and more, uh, interpretations that agencies need to make. Uh, Mr. Dively spent a little time talking about that $150 billion relief fund and how Treasury is going to, trying to interpret the, uh, issue with overlapping jurisdictions. This is the Seattle-King County issue. Uh, I should flag one other thing that NACO is, is working on in regards to that, is the state's share. Uh, if you recall, each state gets a specific, uh, minimum under that $150 billion, and then on top of that, a, a share based on population. And so Treasury is also determining when locals get a, a piece of that pie, is it the entire pie that the state gets, or is it just a piece above the state minimum distribution? So that is another issue that Treasury and NACO, uh, are working on. Uh, the second item I wanted to quickly flag is the US Senate is talking this week about, uh, pumping an additional $250 billion to the Payroll Protection Program. This is the small business loan program. Um, we've seen in the last couple of days an overwhelming demand, uh, and a struggle to process those applications. Um, but it looks like Congress is kind of poised to try to move quickly to, to pump some more money into that system. Moving now to the follow-up information, uh, and this material is on page 11 of your packet, uh, for those that have that in front of you. Uh, I was asked last week about the, the student loan forbearance provisions and whether any unpaid interest would be capitalized. Uh, no answer on that. Uh, we do know that interest will not accrue during this pause, and it's an automatic pause for certain federal loans. Uh, that'll go from March 13th to September 30th. Uh, but we do not know how unpaid interest that accrues prior to this period will be treated once this period ends in September. Uh, this is where the issue of, of whether, if that interest gets capitalized and it adds, uh, uh, to the loan, the principal amount. Um, the Department of Education has not sorted this out yet, so we will continue to pay attention, uh, and provide more of an update when that happens. Was asked about, uh, emergency federal sick leave provisions. Um, this was included in the COVID-2 Response Bill and provides covered employees with up to 80 hours of paid leave for certain purposes. Um, kind of outlined those, those, uh, leave provisions in front of you. Um, but for, in, in that bill, there's a provision that requires, uh, that the sick time is in addition to any existing leave, paid leave provided by an employer. So in this case, that 80 hours would be in addition to any leave provided by King County. Um, and an employer cannot require employees to use their existing accrued leave first before using this emergency leave, although the employee can choose to do so if, if they desire. Uh, moving to the $1,200 economic impact payments, uh, there was a question about how social security recipients would receive these checks. Uh, initial, uh, analysis from IRS suggested that even those who don't file, uh, income tax, uh, would have to file some basic forms, although that has now changed. Um, so the latest guidance is that the IRS is going to use information from the Social Security Administration so that people who receive social security benefits won't need to file tax returns to get this payment. This would include senior citizens and other social security- This would include senior citizens and other Social Security recipients. Beneficiaries would receive these payments by direct deposit or paper check, just as they would normally receive their Social Security benefits. And then the last piece was the special session rumors, which I kind of touched on earlier, looking at after revenue forecast in June, and will involve budget and policy items related to COVID-19 response. And that's my updates. Happy to answer any questions.
Lambert.
Any other questions to line up right now? Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. I have two questions. On the Social Security, is there any means to cap? Because often, Social Security is not the only form of income. So that's my first question.
My understanding is they're going to essentially just make the payments out to Social Security recipients. And if they later prove to be unqualified, they'll recover that in the out years. But I can confirm that for you.
Yeah, that could be an awful lot of paperwork for people that have, are still working by getting a Social Security check. So could you check on that? And then the second thing, would you go over again slowly what you said about the, using the sick leave up? Because it's different than what we read in the newspaper the other day. So could you go over that again? About using your sick leave before you can use the payroll money?
Sure. So there's a provision in the COVID-2 bill that provided emergency paid sick leave. This is 80 hours for certain purposes related to coronavirus, right? If the employee is unable to work because they're quarantining, have been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine, or is experiencing symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis. There's a couple of other provisions. But the gist is this. For employers that have an existing paid leave policy, the Federal Emergency Act, the paid sick time is in addition to any existing leave. So this 80 hours under the Federal Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act would be in addition to any King County sick leave that an employee accrues.
And what is the order of that? Do you use, which one first?
It's up to the employee, really. An employer can't require an employee to use their existing leave before using the emergency leave. So, but the employee can choose to do that.
Okay. Can we talk about that offline more?
Sure.
Thank you.
Colleagues? Hearing no for the questions, Mac. I want to thank you for answering our leftover questions from last week. Very appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Look forward to the continued updates on the state and federal work as well. And this takes us to our final item on the agenda. At the last meeting, Councilmember Balducci asked if members might be supportive of the council undertaking an assessment of how different levels of government and nonprofits are responding to the current pandemic in order to identify any gaps. There isn't any legislation in front of us today on this topic, but I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Balducci to further describe her vision for this effort. And we also have Patrick Hemmiker on the line, who is the project lead, available for questions. Councilmember Balducci?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate having a little bit of time to talk about this. I'm just trying to pull up the language I had about it. And it's not coming up. Give me a moment, please. Sorry.
Sure thing.
All righty. There it is. Okay, thank you. So yeah, I've been talking about this for a little while, both in meetings and in public meetings like this. And obviously, you know, just listening to what we were just discussing, what members are sharing about the various needs they're hearing in the community, there is a, just a tremendous challenge right now for every sector of our economy, private sector, nonprofit, government. Government services are hurting. Families and individuals are hurting. It's just, it's a very challenging time. And of course, as people who represent the residents in our communities, we naturally want to do whatever we can to help people through this period of time, balancing a very complex equation around what we have legitimate resources to really do, mindful not only of the limitations for an agency. I know, colleagues, you all know this very well, but I say this for the public. For an agency with a budget as large as ours, a very high percentage of that budget is committed in ways that don't make it easy for us to move large amounts of money around. We have to maintain basic services that we provide, and that costs, that uses most of our resources. So with all of that in mind, I have asked staff to conduct what I'm calling a needs assessment. But it's nothing like, if you're familiar with a human needs assessment that human services agencies typically do, which is a very deep and broad outreach to the community to find out what the needs in the community are, studying data, and taking quite a bit of time. I basically asked the staff to look at three areas. And the first area is, what are, what are the biggest needs out there? We've identified some already. They're pretty obvious, I think, to us. And so what would, what do we see in terms of people who like, need to keep a roof overhead, need to be able to get food on the table, need to... We want to see our economy bounce back at the end of this recession. So there's all kinds of needs. But what are the ones that are going unmet? Which flows into question two. What resources are already available or will be coming available? We heard about federal packages, one, two, and three. We're getting into number four now. The state is talking about additional money. Heard Dwight Dively, our finance, our Director of Performance Strategy and Budget, talking about ways that the executive is working to free up additional resources. So what are the ones that are already happening? And then what funding resources does the county have? What do we have available that we could potentially repurpose to meet the needs? So with this factual assessment of what are the needs, what resources are being provided by others or will be coming in the future from others, and what resources do we have as a county to apply? I'm hoping we can use that to make good decisions about how we support the community during this time, and frankly, how we communicate what we can do and serve as a connector to other resources and provide the resources that we can without duplicating others' efforts. In just a few little pieces of this, as I said, we don't really have the time or the resources for a full-on needs assessment. And I think our offices are pretty keenly aware, because people are coming to us, of the kinds of needs that are out there. And so I've asked that the staff sort of survey the offices, the council offices, in order to see what we have learned and what we're learning. I think we already have a sense of what resources are available or will be coming available, but it'd be good to have a kind of a compilation of those that we can look at. I think, at least it would be good for me. And then I'd love for us to have a conversation as we go forward, maybe at our next COW meeting, about what resources we can bring to bear to support the needs in our communities. I was really pleased to hear about the use of, potential use of hotel motel tax, lodging tax, for the purposes, one of the legal purposes that we can use it for, which is supporting youth homelessness efforts. We know that all of our homelessness providers have been very badly stretched. Their, their demand is up. Their space doesn't hold as many people as it used to if they're trying to keep individual spacing at a level that supports with public health guidance. And then, of course, one, one positive diagnosis within their facilities, and you can have an entire facility locked down. So the system is badly stretched, and we can put money into supporting youth homelessness organizations now. I want to encourage us to continue to advocate with the state to allow us to use some of the housing, hotel, motel, or lodging tax money for things like rental assistance if we can support ramping that up. Because the rule that says that there's, you know, the moratorium on evictions doesn't mean that rent isn't piling up. Rent is piling up. And when the moratorium on evictions is off, I think we can expect that the notices will start to go out. And so people really need help to keep up with their rent in addition to just not being kicked out of their homes. So that's really all I had to say, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the time to give a little bit of a speech. But that's what I've asked staff to do. They will be looking to us to provide some inputs and hopefully coming back with a more thorough presentation in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Comments, discussion from colleagues? All right, hearing none. I want to thank everybody who participated in the briefings and the informative conversations that we've had. And with no further business to come before the committee as a whole, we are adjourned and will end the call. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Stay healthy and stay safe.